Good evening. My name is Willie Poinsett, and I am one of the co-founders of Respond to Racism in Lake Oswego. With me tonight is my friend and collaborator Linda Ganzini, a member of the Lake Oswego Sustainability Network. On behalf of both of our groups, we'd like to thank you for attending tonight's School Board Candidate Forum. And a big welcome to our candidates: Neelam Gupta, Liz Hartman, Jenny Stupak, and Brian Bills. As all of you probably know, Dr. De La Cruz has announced that she will be leaving at the end of the school year. Given this, it is critical that we listen to the views of these candidates. We'd also like to welcome and acknowledge any elected officials who are watching. Normally, we would ask you to stand and be acknowledged, but we're still taking COVID precautions, so just know that we appreciate your service. As many of you know, Respond to Racism was formed following a racist incident involving fellow community members that compelled us to sit down and talk about racism in our city. And those conversations have continued since July 2017. Our mission is to educate and empower Lake Oswego residents and institutions with the tools to combat racism in all its forms and make Lake Oswego and Oregon a better place to live, work, and visit for residents and visitors of all races and ethnicities. As part of our education and advocacy, we hold monthly community meetings, protests, rallies, celebrations, and we have committees working on programs, police reform, monitoring city meetings, and engagement with our youth. We invite you to join us. And now, my friend Linda Ganzini.
Thank you, Willie, and welcome, everyone. The Lake Oswego Sustainability Network was formed in 2013 with the purpose of promoting sustainable practices in Lake Oswego. We do this through the triple bottom line of environmental stewardship, prosperity, and social equity. We hold events and monthly forums and engage the community through outreach. Our action teams include a schools team, an interfaith team, a transportation team, a climate team, and a diversity, equity, and inclusion team. We work with partners through the city on projects to increase clean energy, reduce waste and toxins, promote clean air and water, and reduce climate emissions. For example, LOS and team members have supported the school district by serving on facilities and bond development committees, conducting in-service training on sustainability to teachers, and connecting parents interested in enhancing sustainability. We supported the passage of the City Climate Plan, and we've advocated for electric cars and tree inventories. There has been a groundswell of community advocacy, engagement, and support among residents, including students and city and school officials to chart a more inclusive and sustainable course for the future of Lake Oswego. Our educational system and its leadership are integral to that effort. That brings us to why we're here tonight. We're hosting this forum because we want to play a role in helping voters make informed decisions about our school board and, in particular, their views and proposals around sustainability, equity, and inclusion throughout the Lake Oswego School District. Willie?
Thank you. We are also here tonight because we care deeply about this community. The school board plays a key role in charting the course of our schools. This includes fostering a welcoming and inclusive environment for all students. There are three school board seats we'll all be voting for in the coming election. There are four candidates. We're very fortunate to have candidates who have a passion for making Lake Oswego's schools the best they can be for every student. We'd like to thank them all for being here tonight and for being willing to step up and dedicate themselves to civic service. Before we get started, we want you to know that tonight's forum is being recorded, and it will be available on YouTube. So please let your neighbors and friends know about that. Okay, let's get started. We'd like to introduce our four esteemed Lake Oswego Student Moderators for the evening. Dia Aurora is a sophomore. Barbara Chen is a senior. Nate Foster is a senior. And Victoria Hutchinson is a senior. And with that, I'd like to pass the mic to our moderators, who will briefly share the format for the evening and get us started. Thank you.
Thank you, Willie and Linda. Here is the agenda for tonight. When we begin, each candidate will have one minute to introduce themselves and give their opening statement. We'll go in alphabetical order. After opening statements, we'll then ask the candidates questions. There will be varying response times ranging from 60 to 90 seconds. We'll let you know how much time is allocated to respond to each question. We'll alternate who answers first by going alphabetically, starting with a candidate, different candidate each time. We'll call your name when it's your turn to answer. At the end of the forum, each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement. Terry Kramer will be our timekeeper. For 60-second response times, the timekeeper Zoom background will turn from green to yellow, indicating you have 15 seconds left on the clock. You will see a red background when your time is up. For 90-second response times, the timekeeper Zoom background will turn from green to yellow, indicating you have 30 seconds left on the clock. You will see a red background when your time is up. At that time, please finish your sentence and pass the mic, so to speak. We thank you in advance for making the job of our timekeeper easy by adhering to the time allotment. Please don't make us mute you. In the event that a candidate needs a question repeated, just ask, and we will repeat the question. But now, we'll start our conversation with the candidates.
All right, let's get started with opening statements. Candidates, please be sure your video is on. Each candidate will introduce themselves and give an opening statement. Brian will start, followed by Neelam, then Liz, then Jenny. You each have 60 seconds for your opening statement. Brian, please unmute your mic and begin when you see the green screen.
Thank you, Nate. I appreciate the introduction. My name is Brian Bills. My family has been in the Lake Oswego community for just about, almost nine years now. I have three children in the district or soon to be in the district. I have an eighth grader who will be a freshman next year, currently at LOJ. I have a third-grade daughter who's at Forest Hills. And I have a four-year-old son who will be coming through the ranks shortly. I have a background in education, law, and business. And it's because of the intersection of these things that I think my background will be useful and provide value as a member on the LOSD board.
Hi, everyone. My name is Neelam Gupta. I have a 30-year history here in Lake Oswego. First, as a sibling, my brother Rajan graduated from Lake Oswego High School and went on to a wonderful medical career. He is now a practicing physician on the front lines of COVID-19. I am employed by the Oregon Health Authority as the Director of Clinical Supports, Integration, and Workforce. And I have been an active supporter of the schools. I also have a daughter who is an eighth grader at LOJ and soon to be at LOHS. I was appointed to the school board last year when Senator Rob Wagner stepped down to step up in the state senate. I was selected out of 24 candidates, and I'm pleased to serve during this time.
Good evening, and thank you Sustainability Network and Respond to Racism for hosting this evening's event. I'm Liz Hartman, running for position four for the Lake Oswego School District Board of Directors. I've been a resident since 1996 and have served as a parent club leader since 2001, working on local option levies, raising money for schools in the foundation, and serving on committees like School Advisory Committee. I am currently the Executive Director of the Lake Oswego Chamber of Commerce. I'm running for a third term on the board because we need our students in school five days a week. We need to renovate and rebuild a few more schools, and we need to provide an excellent education to all of our students. The district has a strategic plan that recognizes that education encompasses more than what is in the community. Change is never easy, and it's inevitable. And we can work to address challenges like a pandemic, ICE, and fires while ensuring our students that Lake Oswego education. Thank you so much for this evening.
Hello, my name is Jenny Stupak, and I am so happy to be here tonight. I am originally from Lake Oswego. I moved to Lake Oswego from Seoul, South Korea when I was 10 years old. And ever since then, I have been a Lake Oswego Portland resident. I went to Palisades Elementary School, and I went to Will Lugo Junior High School, and I went to Lakridge High School, and I graduated in 2015. Two of those schools don't exist anymore, or not the way that it used to be when I was around. But I am running for a school board just because I care about the community, and I think the community can use new and different insight as a previous school attendee and young adult. So, thank you. What's up?
Thank you so much, candidates, and it's so nice to meet you. Here is your first question. You will each have 90 seconds to respond. Neelam will answer first, followed by Liz, then Jenny, then Brian. Here is your question. What in your past has shaped your beliefs about diversity, equity, and inclusion? And what specifically will you do to make our school district more welcoming for every student and parent? Neelam, please unmute your mic and begin when you see the green screen.
My life has been heavily influenced by my family. My parents immigrated to this country from India, seeking economic opportunity. And I grew up in the Middle East. After having been born in Los Angeles, I grew up being exposed to different religions, cultures, and ways of life. And when I was a teenager, we moved here to Lake Oswego when my brother started in high school. And I went on to go to college and graduate school where I earned my Master's in Public Health and Master's in Social Work from UCLA. And I devoted my career to advancing health equity. I believe that our schools need to create a culture of belonging. This past year has shown us the impacts of systemic racism. And I have my own personal experiences of racism and hate incidents in the schools, which motivated me to join the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee and to become a school board member.
We don't always know what impacts us through our life. I have always been a voracious reader in the past of a number of books on different subjects. I have been fortunate to be in a family that my grandmother was traveling to the United Nations, and there were stories about what she was doing through her commitment to being aware of what was going on internationally. I was a student activist like some of you, and in high school, served as student body president and had an opportunity to talk to students of all areas in Southeast Portland. I went on to become the student body president at Willamette University and worked with every group there, which included the Black Student Union and the international students and a variety of people along the way. So influences have been in every way possible. I believe in the work the Lake Oswego School District is doing with the strategic plan, and I think that is where we will be able to do the most good. I also believe that people have to take individual responsibility as well. And I am committed to working with the business community. I am committed to work through the neighborhoods. And I encourage our students to be as committed as you folks are to hold forums like this and to be working with your fellow students, with the parents, and with the teachers.
Hello. Yes, I guess what inspired me would be my life here in Lake Oswego as well. Unfortunately, I also had a lot of experiences growing up, being a person of color. And I think that is probably one of the greatest reasons, or the most impactful reasons anyway, why I'm running for a school board in the first place. I think it was we needed someone to, at least as a student's perspective, like stand up and stick up and protect the kids, especially people of color. And I think it's a time to really listen. Obviously, things don't happen overnight, and I recognize that. But I think that educating, protecting, and listening are the three main things that need to happen right now. And I am more than happy to listen to more stories. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I think, as everyone has sort of indicated, it is life experience. My mother is a German woman from Germany. My father is an African-American man from Hot Springs, Arkansas. I met my mother in the Air Force. I grew up in Las Vegas, which is not the cosmopolitan Mecca of the US. It was a very racially divided community when I grew up. And I had a lot of experiences which shaped my perception of society and equity, which at that time, I simply thought of as fairness. First person in my family to go to college, mom's side or father's side. Sorry, graduated from college, mom's side or father's side. And education has been a path for fairness for me. The incidents that I have experienced with discrimination, I have responded to with capability and work ethic. And I think it is incumbent upon us to shape the youth today to understand these issues and to prepare them to combat prejudice with ability.
Your second question is from our students. You'll each have 60 seconds to respond. Liz will answer first, followed by Jenny, then Brian, then Neelam. Here's the question. If we were to ask people you've worked with or led, what words do you think they would use to describe your level of awareness of various diverse backgrounds and how you demonstrated that you valued diversity? Liz, please unmute your mic and begin when you see the green screen.
I think people would describe me as constantly listening, constantly learning, constantly working to be fair and equitable, and evaluating every situation to look for the most fair form possible to address the needs of whatever the situation is. Probably should have asked for the question to be asked again, but thank you so much for the opportunity.
Hello. I think my colleagues would describe me as welcoming and a good listener as well. Unfortunately, I feel like I've been in many rooms in my life where, you know, certain type of people have been excluded. And I think now we're trying to answer a lot of questions of asking why, like why that might be. And I think this forum is a good start as well. Like, why are, you know, women not in STEM? Are people of color feeling excluded in various arenas and feeling discriminated as well? And yeah, I think it always comes with open arms and welcoming and understanding that we may have made mistakes in the past and growing and learning from that. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I ask that the question be repeated, please?
Yeah, sure. Here's the question. If we were to ask people you've worked with or led, what words do you think they would use to describe your level of awareness of various diverse backgrounds and how you demonstrated that you valued diversity?
Thank you. I would say that the words used would be compassionate, patient, and objective. And I would be proud to have those things said because I think they are all essential in managing a diverse group of people, tackling a diverse set of issues or topics. One of the things my parents always taught me was to listen first and listen completely. And I think that that's something that we don't often do. There's this tendency to assume the positions of others because of an affiliation we might assign. And I think we miss an opportunity to find concessions, balance, and agreement. So, yeah, so I think that's how I would be described. Thank you.
I think I would be described as someone who is patient, who is kind. But when I have an opinion and I feel strongly about something, I speak up, which sometimes surprises people. And I think, you know, I'm a South Asian American woman. And so I am part of the model minority myth that I'm a hard worker, I do well. But I also am a leader, and I am proud to serve on the school board. I hope, as a person of color, to open the door for other people of color to serve as the first person in this role.
Thank you, candidates. For this question, you will each have 90 seconds to respond. Jenny will answer first, followed by Brian, then Neelam, then Liz. Here's the question. What in your past has shaped your beliefs around sustainability and environmental stewardship? Jenny, please unmute your mic and begin when you see the green screen.
Hi. Well, I studied atmospheric science, climate science, at Oregon State University. So I'd say that environmentalism and sustainability has been rooted deeply in me in the last several years. I forget the question. Could you repeat that, please? Sorry.
Yes, here's the question. What in your past has shaped your beliefs about sustainability and environmental stewardship?
Yeah, okay, well, yeah, studying climate science, I think, has allowed me to gain a really great understanding of what works and what doesn't, and how it impacts our lives. But I think foremost, what's the most important thing to do is have these changes in our lives really ingrained in us. I really liked how, like Oswego, gave out composting bins because that's actually how I started composting. I don't think I would have had the encouragement to start composting if I didn't have that reach of hand from Lake Oswego giving out compost bins to the community members. And I think with these small steps, you start kind of having a habit and changing your ways. And I think that's really important. And things like that. And also, education on why it's important is also really important as well. So I think those two things will at least alleviate and help Lake Oswego be a more sustainable community. Thanks.
I've always been a student of science. I initially started college as an engineering and physics major. I enjoy science. It wasn't a path that I wanted to turn into a career, but I enjoy learning it. As a consequence of that, and just a desire to stay informed with what's going on in the world, partly fueled by a career in international law, I just inform myself about sustainability, environmental issues for those reasons. But then I had kids. And I've always realized that when you're forced to teach something, you have to actually learn it first. And with young kids, who I am trying to teach values and model habits that I think are both important for them and the local and global community at large, that always pushes me to learn more so that I can answer the ever-waiting-in-the-wings question of, but why? Or, but how? Thank you.
My earliest influence was really my parents. Coming from a country like India, they really valued conservation of resources. I still remember when my parents first moved here, always going with them to the recycling centers before we had those bins that would accept recycling. And then also through my career as a public health professional, I worked on a project very early in my career that was a multi-year initiative that involved working with low-income communities. One, low-income community on environmental home health hazards such as lead poisoning, triggers that cause asthma. And then another low-income community on a toxic dump in their neighborhood. And so, as a public health professional, I understand the importance of sustainability and the disproportionate impact it has on certain communities. And I think one thing that's really become apparent in this past year of fire and ICE, first with the ice storms, and I'm sorry, first with the fires, the wildfires, and then with the ice storms, has been the impact of climate change and the urgency to address it.
I am a true believer in stewardship. I am a true believer in stewardship. I believe in stewardage to be a steward of the earth and to be a steward of our resources and definitely a steward of our children. I don't like to talk about myself a lot, but I can remember when I was seven, going to a Stop Oregon Litter and Vandalism meeting that inspired me throughout probably the rest of my life to keep looking at the way resources are taken care of and communities and the things that are important. I have had friends who worked for Metro in recycling, and I realize recycling is not what everything of sustainability is about. But I have to say that I've been motivated over the years with a little bit of competition for people who could get the most garbage or the least amount of garbage out. So I have a friend who was able to get down to one pickup per month because recycling and reuse was so high. And I find that inspiring in people who are able to do those kinds of things. I care about the community and I really appreciate that we have a Lake Oswego Sustainability Network to increase people's awareness and the importance to be stewards, stewards of our community.
Great. For this question, you'll each have 90 seconds to respond. Brian will answer first, followed by Neelam, then Liz, then Jenny. Here's the question. What would be your top sustainability priorities and what would be their metrics for success? Brian, please unmute your mic and begin when you see the green screen.
I think there are two, two avenues from which I would approach that. The first is the infrastructure improvements that are anticipated in the district. I think it is paramount that as we look to rebuild schools, refurbish schools, that that's done with a carbon footprint metric in mind and a and, and taking advantage of all of the resources available to mitigate environmental impact and approach sustainability. But I also think that on the opposite end of that spectrum, we have to capture the hearts and minds of our students. They are the stewards of tomorrow. And it is imperative that we model behavior that embraces conservation, sustainability, and that these things are normalized in the eyes and minds of our students. I think it's only in that way that we have a leadership in the wings that will continue the work that we hope to do today and over the next coming years, following the strategic plan and the other initiatives that the district has currently in place.
I'm, I'm really excited about our new strategic priorities and in particular the one teaching and practicing sustainability. The place we need to start is really to establish the organizational structure that is going to be accountable to sustainability. My first understanding where we're starting from. We should conduct an assessment so we can get a better understanding of what current district and school practices are. So we can identify where we're doing well and where we need to do better. And that will give us a baseline that we can then chart improvement and growth. And then we can also establish some key performance metrics. And we have a wonderful base to start with. We have very active green teams at each high school. And supported by the Lake Oswego Sustainability Network, but I also feel we definitely need to increase our bench strength. We need to hire a teacher dedicated or appointed teacher dedicated to sustainability. And then lastly, you know, I couldn't agree more that we really need to focus on our buildings and looking at Lakewood Middle School, the beautiful new building as a model.
Would you repeat the question again, please?
Sure. So what would be your top sustainability priorities and what would be the metrics for their success? Thank you.
Thank you. And Neelam, putting that statement together is wraps it up very, very nicely. I think some of the things that we also need to measure have to do with transportation in the district and part of, if we're speaking specifically about the school district, one of the things that we have not been able to do is work on the safe routes to school, which would encourage more people to walk. I know when my daughter went to school, it would have been seven minutes for her to walk to school, 30 minutes on the bus, and there was never a safe way to get across Highway 43. And metrics on something like that are the number of students who are walking, the number who are bicycling. Part of it is a health issue. There are so many other things that we do need to do, but I, I am feel strongly about transportation and getting more people who will walk to school and control the emissions. We'll also be looking at electric buses. Thank you.
Well, I think there are two main things. If you're looking at the Lake Oswego School District as a whole, there would be energy usage and, energy usage and waste, whether that be building, functional, transportation, electricity, and looking at it and how that could be minimized or used more efficiently, I think is always important. And another would be education and habit changes. And to make that palatable, first of all, I think teaching why this is important is obviously very important and how it's happening and all that. And then also to make it something that someone would want to do, I think is very important. Mostly with consumption, with what we can, you know, alter and take form of. I think consumption, you know, changes is really important. Really easy thing I can think off the top of my head would be water bottles, but I remember in college, lost water bottles would be put in a bucket. And if you just have a bucket of old lost water bottles, nobody's going to want to take it. But if you make it as a water bottle adopting, for whatever reason, I wanted to take it a water bottle and use it and use it more. So then if I would purchase water from a simply used plastic and making composting more fun and other things like that, I think would help Lake Oswego School Districts and teacher students to have a more environmentally sustainable habits for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. For this question, you will have 60 seconds to respond. Neelam will answer first, followed by Liz, then Jenny, then Brian. Here is your question. How will you encourage and support student activism on your campus and ensure students' voices are heard? Neelam, please unmute your mic and begin when you see the green screen.
So I firmly believe that we need to be centered as a school district in student voice. Because it's students who are living the day-to-day experiences. And our students are, you see right here, we have four amazing, wonderful students who are moderating tonight's panel. So we have so much to draw from. I'll just give you one quick example. I am the board liaison to the Land Acknowledgement Committee, which is coming up with a land acknowledgement statement for the school district and a protocol. And that committee came about because a student emailed the board asking for a plaque to be put up. And that was what resulted in the committee. And I, you know, yeah, I just am so excited to continue to develop those partnerships.
I truly believe students, influence students are the most important thing that can be going on to make changes in the district. The school board has reinstated representatives from each of the high schools on the school board for student voice. Those students have reached down into the middle school to talk to those students. It is important to have this, and it's important to be mentors to our students as well. I always find getting the opportunity to attend the forums that students put together are not only informative, but it also sometimes gives you a chance to give feedback on where students can make more of a difference. And we have to keep those dialogues going on. I know all of the school board members that are currently on there and all the ones who are running really will be willing to work with students in any way to keep student voice being heard. We've also been fortunate to have superintendents who have had superintendent councils, listening to a broader part of the community of students.
Hello, I guess student voices is also probably one of the main reasons why I'm running. I am 23 years old, graduated in 2015. So it wasn't too long ago when I was a student at Lakewood High School. And I do think that there is a bit of a gap between people who run the school and students. And I think that quite frankly, it's not as accessible to a lot of students to reach out, and they might not feel as comfortable reaching out as often. And maybe having Facebook groups app avenues, whether that be the neighborhood app or other social media, I think will be important in the upcoming years now that that's more readily available, frequently used, and more easily used. I think trying to attend meetings is sometimes overwhelming for students as well. And I hope to be a less intimidating, more accessible person as well. And yeah, I would love to hear what everybody has to say. And I also have been there fairly recently. Thank you.
One of the perks of what I do professionally as an education consultant is that I get to work with some incredibly talented, insightful, committed, driven young people. Many of whom are from the Lake Oswego School District. And it is inspiring how how well and how plainly they grasp many of the issues that we as adults are charged with, with managing. But I think the onus has to be on using those students to increase participation. We often talk about welcoming groups to different venues, different activities. But I think the verb should be to include. To include puts the onus on those who are there to draw others in. To welcome is to passively acknowledge in a pleasing way someone's participation. I think as a community and relying on our student leaders, we have to include other students to, to continue these, this participation.
Thank you candidates. For this next question, you will each have 90 seconds to respond. Liz will answer first, followed by Jenny, then Brian, then Neela. Here's your question. We asked you to watch a video clip. In that clip and at several recent events, students have stepped up to tell their ongoing experience of racism in the schools and getting little or no support from the teachers and administration. What will you do to lead the effort to make our school an anti-racism zone? Liz, please unmute your mic and begin when you see the green screen.
Thank you. I appreciated the opportunity to watch the video and I wound up watching it probably three or four times. I appreciate that students don't always feel heard. And one of the difficulties is change does not happen immediately and it happens over time. And sometimes when you think people aren't listening is when you've made the greatest impact. Because sometimes folks don't know how to respond. And becoming and being an anti-racist district is not something that's going to happen overnight, and it's not going to happen just because students work really, really hard. It's going to take everybody working really, really hard. It takes teachers, it takes parents. It takes the community. And whatever we can do to help students and let them know that they're being heard. It's not, you're not always going to get the response you want. You're not going to always get the response you need, but you are making a difference by making the statements. It's important to constantly be in front of the Board of Directors or be speaking in the community or writing letters to the editor. All of the channels that are available. It doesn't just have to be social media. Our school board even reads the student newspapers. So we do keep up with what is being said with the students. And thank you for the video.
Hello, yes, I, first of all, it's heartbreaking and I understand and I've been there. And something that I think is important is first of all, stopping it immediately if hopefully a teacher ever sees it. I mean, personally, I remember in hindsight and looking at yearbooks now, I would have people comment writing down really racist things that seemed really normal back then about being Asian and all these things, but it wasn't. And I hope if a teacher ever hears anything like that, they'd stop it immediately and explain it, you know, not in a really combative way, but explaining why that's probably not the most kind or good thing to point out, say, and all these things. And also another thing I think is biases. I think biases happen in every aspects. And I think we have it a lot at schools and education and students. I think that students of color also get more punished for the same issue that other white students might, you know, also come across. I've personally seen that frequently and was really upset by it. So I think that's kind of what I meant by protecting students as well. Those two are kind of the main things that come to mind, but I'm sure there are endless amount of things we can do as well. Thank you.
You know, I, and I've said this at different, different instances, you know, the issues that we have in the schools don't start in the schools. They start on the dining tables of the families that students come from. And I think as a community, we have to be willing to have difficult conversations and speak frankly and share experiences. I think that also has to start at the elementary school level. We have to normalize diversity. And that comes from having faculty and staff that students see that don't look like them. But are valued and prized and students learn to appreciate difference. I think we have to look at leadership and put people in positions of leadership that our students can look to. Both as a sounding board when these issues arise that might be more comfortable and more likely to elicit student responses, stories, and experiences. But then also to create an expectation that everything is available. I, I think that is, that's critically important.
Within our new priority of creating a culture of belonging, the top strategy is to be an anti-racist organization. And it, you know, I can't tell you how much I've enjoyed serving alongside our current superintendent who is leaving to care for her mother. Because I wholeheartedly agree with her that diversity, equity, inclusion, and access work is our most important work. I completely agree that we need I completely agree that we need to start with understanding and recognizing and addressing biases and their impact with, within our teachers, adopting restorative practices. And as, as a few speakers mentioned earlier, also looking critically at behavior and discipline data. And then we need to adopt authentic curriculum. The idea of windows, mirrors and sliding glass doors. If kids can get stories that put up a mirror to their own experience and then give them a window to see into someone else's experience and then give them a door that they can pass through to greater understanding. That is what we're striving for. And then lastly, I couldn't agree more with developing diverse leadership teachers and staff members. It's an area of personal expertise of mine and I'm very committed to that as well.
For this question, you will each have 60 seconds to respond. Jenny will answer first, followed by Brian, then Neela, then Liz. Here's the question. How do you think students can best be engaged in sustainability efforts? Jenny, please unmute your mic and begin when you see the green screen.
Hi, well, as an individual student, I think to be able to be the most sustainable you can is to implement new habits and consume responsibility, response, responsibly, responsibly. Such as, you know, buying reusable items such as water bottles and other things, watching how long you turn the water, electricity and all these other energy usage impacts. But also creating new habits and then also implementing them, whether that be composting and not driving as much. And also educating yourself on how to do so continuously, how to continuously support it and why it's happening and how it's happening so that future generations can also care and be influenced as well. Thank you.
Yes, so as I suggested earlier, I think the, the best way to learn something is to be forced to teach it. I think we need to allow our students to teach the students that are coming after them through various clubs, extracurricular organizations, et cetera. Put students in a position where they can learn and then share that knowledge and mentor the students that are coming behind them. I also think that we should have more educational funding money, scholarship money, private sector scholarship contributions that are awarded based on students' participation in sustainability, conservationism, et cetera. We have them for so many other areas. This is one that I would like to try to recruit some participation in.
Okay, now it's my turn. I am really excited about, you know, student involvement and leadership because I feel like students have been at the forefront of demanding change in our sustainability curriculum, our practices and our, our teaching at the school district and the city as well. And I think we just need to build on that great infrastructure. And I see a lot of intersection with sustainability and some of the other priorities as well. You know, the priority around promoting health and resiliency also should include nutrition and farm to table. The priority around achieving equitable academic outcomes. We should include a career pathway that focuses on sustainability. So there are so many opportunities to involve students.
I told the story before that at Lakewood High School, when my daughter was there, there were a couple of students who were really big into sustainability and the green team. And when they graduated, all of a sudden, all the student activities ceased. And then there were some parents who were really into sustainability and they were out working and putting things together for recycling and the different things going on. And what I see with the strategic plan is intent and it's a way to make everybody successful. You can't just do this by yourself and expect others to join in. So by having teachers as a part of sustainability, parents as a part of sustainability, students, students teaching other students, students teaching their parents, we have a better chance to have a full-time sustainability program that doesn't drop. So we have to put in the education segment. We have to have great activities that students can do and allow them to be the leaders in sustainability in our community.
Okay, this question is from the students. For this question, you will each have 60 seconds to respond. Brian will answer first, followed by Neela, then Liz, then Jenny. Here's the question. The city has a climate action plan. Do you know of any definitive plans for the district to adopt its own climate action plan or make facility changes to move toward carbon neutrality? If not, what steps would you take toward carbon neutrality? Brian, please unmute your mic and begin when you see the green screen.
Thanks, Nate. So I'm not aware of the district has that plan as of yet. I, my learning curve is still pretty steep as I get my head around all the initiatives that the district has undertaken and put in place. But I do think that the goal has to be manageable, sustainable decrease of the carbon footprint. Carbon neutrality is obviously a, an ideal outcome. But it's a journey and I think that we have to start with areas like infrastructure improvements. And some of the projects that I worked on in real estate development, I worked on a development in North Idaho for which environmental sensitivity, protection of waste of wetlands, all of these issues were very important. Dealing with contractors and developers who understand these issues, I think is imperative as we move forward in infrastructure improvement.
So within the sustainability priority, the school district also has a strategy to prioritize sustainable building practices and facility operations. And I'm, I'm so happy that, you know, our students are finally back in school and able to use the beautiful new Lakewood Middle School, which sets a new standard for our buildings and facilities. And we are going to need to pass another bond so we can continue that work of continuing to construct resilient and highly efficient buildings. And you know, there's so much potential for us to coordinate with the city. I know Liz Hartman had earlier mentioned the possibility of safe routes to schools, but there are so many other possibilities as well.
So the answer to the question is no, there is not a climate action plan at this time. But what the district has had and what the school board has instructed over the last five or six years is to make buildings as sustainable as possible when we're building new buildings, to repair buildings so that they are safe and that they are, when we're making changes in buildings, that those would be sustainable changes. The district has partnered with the Lake Oswego Sustainability Network. That was a big step. And our school district probably has one of the best relationships, a city-school district relationship of any in the state of Oregon. So the school district will be working with the city as the city makes initiatives and the city will be working with the school district to, we're part of the city. So we are part of the city's climate action plan. But certainly there is a good chance that with student voice that we will have our own district climate action plan at one, at some point.
Hello, well, I think we should have a climate action plan. And I think that there are kind of two main things when it comes to sustainability. We mentioned previously like energy usage, but when it comes to city planning, it's also like the offset and mitigation efforts, whether it's city planning. And I hope with future infrastructure that I think we make sure that it is necessary as well. I think just always adding more isn't always the answer. It's not always bigger, the better, shinier, the better, newer, the better. But also, yeah, making sure that our buildings are up to date. And also giving students and families of Lake Oswego incentives to go more green, whether that be energy credits, carbon credits and ways to, like giving ways to be more sustainable. Like I said, the compost bin actually was a huge help in my life for later years, not just that single bin. Yeah, well, my time is up, but I have a lot in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. This question is from the students. For this question, you will have 60 seconds to respond. Neela will answer first, followed by Liz, then Jenny, then Brian. Here is the question. As a community and in our schools, what are some ways we could reduce the amount of food waste? Neela, please unmute your mic and begin to the green screen.
That is a great question. And I think there are several ways we could do it. One of the first ways that comes to mind is composting. I know that the new Lakewood Middle School does have an infrastructure to support composting and providing incentives to kids once they're back in school and able to eat lunch will be helpful to promote that. I think the fifth grade class just recently did a curriculum around food waste. It was piloted by the, the green teams and an LOHS teacher. And that, you know, we just have to teach it. Thank you.
I had the opportunity to give this a lot of thought when I used to be a parent monitor at what was Wiluka Middle School and watching how students threw a lot of things away. I really believe though, that starting with students to initiate these programs is what gets other people charged about being part of the program, whether you're a teacher or the administration. But that means that the district needs to help provide some resources because sometimes you need a few funds to put together composting and to put together a place and decisions to help make it easy and not put barriers for students to put together composting programs. And frankly, I would add to a composting program some worm, worm composting, raising worms as well, because I think it's all part of keeping our gardens together and putting that in place. Thank you.
I think some things we can implement in schools, we mentioned previously composting bins, but also making sure our lunches are compostable would be very important. I, I mean, last, our school lunches aren't the most, I feel nutritionally friendly. So I feel that I think upping our lunch nutrition is also very important, including with food waste. I think that will kind of go hand in hand. Another thing of valuing food, we have a lot of extra land. And I think with a little bit of effort, we could make a little farm, kind of like luster farms in our elementary, middle and high schools. And having some sort of farming curriculum, I think would be fun and teach reducing food waste and valuing your food and the food that you put into your body. Those are, I think, would be a very fun and efficient place to implement reducing food waste. Thank you.
As is apparent from all the great responses, food waste and sustainability are very closely tied. And I think, you know, obviously the composting is an important piece. But as with many of the things that I've talked about tonight, it for me goes back to educating and capturing the minds of our elementary school students and making sure that they embody these values. They learn these lessons and we normalize the practices that we're trying to promote. I think, you know, again, we can leverage the influence and participation of older students to help in that effort. But ultimately, we are combating habits and lifestyles that exist outside of the school. And the only way that we can effectively do that is with more information, more modeling and more education. And I think that's, that's the task at hand.
Thank you. This next question is from our students. For this question, you will have 90 seconds to respond. Liz will answer first, followed by Jenny, then Brian, then Neela. Here's the question. As a school board member, you will interact with parents, community members, district and school staff who don't share the same ideas and thoughts as you. Have you had challenges like this in the past? How will you work through this challenge? Liz, please unmute your mic and begin when you see the green screen.
Yeah, I have had that challenge over many, many years. I have been a neighborhood chair. I've been active throughout my life in different work situations. I worked in the US Senate. I find listening is the best way to work through those because in our district, no matter how much you may not agree, you will find things that you have agreement on. We are not all that different and just to be able to have a conversation. In this district, people care about what is going on and that is why they are passionate. So even if you disagree with someone, you may find that there are areas where you agree adamantly and can still work together. And we have a district that has so many educated and passionate and capable and articulate people that it's a must to listen. You can't be on the school board and not listen to people to hear what's going on because it helps guide the decision-making. Thank you for the opportunity to answer that.
Hello, I think that is why diversity is so important and great. I think listening and including as many voices as possible. If we didn't have that and if everybody agreed, I think you wouldn't see all the options and different ideas that might have been possible. I liked this book I read recently. It was called Nonviolent Communication, which is kind of like just a strategy of compassionate communication and collaborative communication, essentially focusing on not trying to meet everything where you have the same ideals, but also kind of addressing what the fundamental need is and understanding and being compassionate with that and trying to address that as well. Yeah, and that's why we're all here anyway, right? So yeah, unfortunately it happens all the time, but it's also fortunate that it happens all the time. So thank you for this opportunity and time. So, thank you for this opportunity and time. Bye.
You know, one of the things you learn as a transactional attorney is how to negotiate and find compromise. I remember when I was making the decision between litigation and transactional law, I had a mentor, the GC of Occidental Patrol, who said to me, "Do you want to be involved in marriages or divorces?" Meaning, in transactional work, the goal is to find compromise and make something happen, as opposed to litigation where the goal is to win. I think to accomplish that, you have to be patient. You have to listen. You have to be objective, and you have to be fair. And sometimes that means acknowledging that a supposition that you are relying on or a parameter by which you are defining an issue isn't accurate. And we have to be open and fair in those determinations. But in my experience, as a CEO of a medical device company, owning my own business, doing land use negotiations with city council members, if you are patient and you listen, you are objective and fair in your analysis. Compromise and resolution is usually close at hand.
Throughout my career, I have worked with a great diversity of stakeholders to build common agendas, to enact systems change. And I have found that, as many of the other speakers have said, listening deeply and sometimes talking to people who have different viewpoints than you can advance your understanding. And I feel like it is a challenge for the school district right now during a time in which we have a lot of different viewpoints. And I am committed to listening and engaging and developing a common path forward, especially as we emerge out of this pandemic, which has been so difficult. You know, it's been a collective experience, but the impacts have been disproportionate. So I, you know, I have to say, I, it sometimes keeps me up at night feeling that we're, we need to listen and engage and develop common ground.
All right, we've come to the end of the forum, and now we'll have each candidate give a closing statement. You will each have 60 seconds. We'll start with Jenny, then Brian, then Neelam, then Liz. Jenny, please unmute your mic and begin when you see the green screen.
Hello, everybody. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you so much for allowing me to be here. I love hearing everybody's stories, and thank you for your effort into the community. I hope I can participate in the school board as a young person of color, giving my input and standing up for the students here in Lake Oswego. So, yeah, have a good evening. Thank you for your time. Bye.
Yeah, first and foremost, thank you to Respond to Racism and the Lake Oswego Sustainability Network for putting this forum together. I think it's extremely helpful for the community to have an opportunity to understand the mindset and positions of the candidates that are looking to run for office. You know, I'm pretty excited about the opportunity to be on the board despite the challenges that are ahead of us. I remember when I first considered doing this, I got a question on my website from a community member who asked me to identify what particularly the challenges might be. And at that point, I had no idea that the list would be as long as it is today. But having spent a considerable amount of time talking to the existing board members, having listened to all of the candidates, confident that the board next year, regardless of its makeup, will be poised to continue the success of Lake Oswego School District and keep our students first. Thank you.
I also want to echo my thanks to Respond to Racism and the Lake Oswego Sustainability Network. I feel like your role and importance have been elevated during this past year in which we've been faced by unimaginable challenges. But by coming together and being creative, I hope that we can find a common path forward. And we need to really start talking to each other and having more of these sorts of opportunities. I really look forward to, the school board is planning to start meeting again in person and starting to bring back public testimony. And I really, in person, and I really look forward to that. So, thank you so much.
And thank you, Respond to Racism and the Lake Oswego Sustainability Network. It's been an honor to represent you these past few years. Our school still needs representation in the state legislature because funding is not a certainty, which COVID has kind of shown us. This, the district still has schools that need to be rebuilt, and we have bonds to pass. There is so much going on, and not everyone knows everything that's going on in the district. And this, Lake Oswego, is a very special city. Our parents are passionate about their most precious resource, which is our children. The school board will continue to listen, read, keep up with information, go to classes, webinars, and with all that information strive to not only be the leading district in the state, but in work towards being a leading district in the nation. I appreciate and respect your feedback and input, and I ask for your vote to continue doing great work in our district. Thank you.
Well, thank you all. We'd like to thank you for participating in tonight's forum. We're very grateful that you were all willing to engage and share your views on issues related to diversity, equity, inclusion, and sustainability. If the audience members have questions for the candidates, their website addresses are at the YouTube page for the video. In addition, we might have time at the end for a couple of questions from the audience that we have collected. If you want to sign up for the Lake Oswego Sustainability Network newsletter in order to get involved and learn about our activities, please go to our website, losn.org.
Thank you, Linda, and the Lake Oswego Sustainability Network for partnering with us on this forum. And thank you to the candidates. We want to remind everyone that our organizations do not endorse political candidates. We encourage you, the audience members, to write letters to the editor following tonight's forum so that the broader community can get a sense of who you felt spoke well to the issues that are important to you. The next Respond to Racism meeting will be on Monday evening, May 3rd, from 6:30 to 8:30. The meeting focus will be on the experiences of our Asian-American and Pacific Islanders. And we would love to have you register at our website, at respondtorecism.org, to get a Zoom link. We are hoping that you can join us. Our Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders have had a really hard time this last year. And we're going to hear from them and talk about some things that we can do. And I think, do we have any time for questions? Did I leave us a few minutes?
I think we do. And Esther Schwartz has collected some that came in on the chat tonight. In addition, we had a couple from email. So Esther, why don't you go ahead with the questions? And we'll let you decide the order of the candidates.
All right, thank you, Linda. As you might anticipate, we have more questions in the chat than we will have room for. So I am just going to ask them in the order in which they came in. And the first question is, this week, we learned of Dr. Dela Cruz's resignation. What is the board process to fill this position with someone who embraces the values of diversity, equity, and inclusion? And I think I'll just use the order in which the candidates appear on my screen. So first will be Liz, followed by Neelam, then Brian, and last will be Jenny. Liz, you want to unmute and go ahead?
Thank you. The board is still kind of reeling with the announcement that Dr. Dela Cruz is, has submitted her resignation. And we completely understand that that is due to her, her family situation. The board met, and we are dedicated to the strategic plan. The best way to keep the strategic plan going is to listen to the recommendation from the superintendent, which was that we keep the strategic plan going through Dr. Jennifer Shealy, who's been a co-author on the plan and worked on it all the way through. In fact, Dr. Shealy has the endorsement of all of the last four superintendents, as well as a number of past board members. And after hearing her story and her commitment to the district, it made sense to keep the district going on the strategic plan with the appointment of Dr. Shealy pending contract negotiations.
I agree at how, how heartbroken I am, with what a heavy heart I made a motion to accept Superintendent Dela Cruz's resignation at last night's board meeting. And my initial reaction when I first learned she was leaving was, we have to do a search. But unfortunately, the pipeline of superintendence is very, very shallow. And given everything that we've been through and everything that we need to accomplish, stability is really, really important. And Jen Shealy exemplifies a leader who has done so much. She has been a counselor, a teacher, a bus driver. And she is, was Laura's top pick. And so that's why we went with that choice. Thank you.
So unlike Liz and Neelam, I am not a returning board member. And so I can't speak to the process itself. But what I will say is, I understand the community's desire for transparency. I also understand the community's desire for a, an active search to make sure that we are always putting in place the best candidates, particularly for positions of this importance. I did not know Dr. Shealy very well. I had an opportunity to talk with her since her announcement and was very encouraged by the story that she shared with me. And I'm hopeful that she will have an opportunity to share that story with the broader community in a number of different formats. So what I can say is that I hope the board continues to involve the community in decisions of this importance while championing the issues and the priorities from a management perspective that need to be, need to be managed. Thank you.
Hello, um, yeah, sudden departure is really hard and sad. And, you know, I hope the best for Dr. Dela Cruz and her family. But Dr. Shealy, she was my middle school principal and my high school principal, so I know her very well, and I adore her. So if she does get carried through, I was not aware of her maybe having step up to that position. But if she does, I would love to see her around more and, you know, also have me be a part of the community. And I just wanted to say thank you to all the members who do care so much, leaving questions up on the side. I'm looking at the chat, but I guess, long story short, we're here to serve you. So my opinions are important, but I think first and foremost, yeah, the transparency, and we're just always here to listen. And with diversity as well, I think listening is always the most important part. Okay, thank you.
So do we have time for another question? There are, as I said earlier, there are many more questions in the chat.
Yes, Esther, go ahead.
All right. There is a question on term limits. And the question goes like this. How many terms do each see as a viable balance while allowing for new voices to be heard? Oh, let's see, Jenny, you're first on my screen, then Brian, then Neelam, then Liz.
Hello, I think two-term is a good limit. It's a presidency limit. Same goes with other elections. I think two-term would give you just enough time to kind of carry through whatever you might have wanted to for the community. And I think that would allow for new faces to step up more frequently as well. Thank you.
I think term limits are an important, important check on legislative bodies, not just school boards. Whether it's two terms or three terms, with respect to the LOSD school board, I haven't informed myself well enough to make that call, but I do think a term limit should be in place. But I think we're benefited by the fact that we do have a staggered board. And so we don't lose the institutional experience of the board at every election cycle. There's always carryover regardless of election outcomes. So in principle, I strongly favor term limits. We'll have to do some more consideration as to whether that's a two-term or three-term window.
I would agree that two to three terms is an ideal timeframe because it's always good to get fresh thinking, fresh ideas on the school board. I, you know, agree also that having the staggered terms helps, you know, bring in fresh perspectives periodically. And I will say about the Lake Oswego School Board, it is a very high-performing, high-functioning school board. And I've been so pleased to join. I'm still in my first year of service, and it's a wonderfully collaborative group that I am honored to serve with, with all my colleagues. And I would look forward to another four years of service with the new board.
The Lake Oswego is a fortunate school district. We almost always have people running for the school board. Unfortunately, in the rest of the state of Oregon, they have to recruit people and wind up with no candidates on the ballot and have to appoint people. There are some of the smaller school districts that have people who have served for 20 and 25 years, and that is certainly not to the benefit of any school district. One of the things that school board members should do is to constantly be up to speed on what is going on in education, what is going on for students. And certainly, one of the reasons our district is a leader in equity and the commitment to equity is because our school board members have been educated in this and gone through Oregon School Boards Association. I don't know that I would put a limit on because of the impact on the rest of the state for our school district. I think as long as we have people who are willing to serve and are keeping up with what's going on, the district will be well-served.
Thank you, candidates, for your thoughtful answers. The next question is one regarding anti-LGBTQ bias in the schools. And the question is, how do you plan on addressing these issues? So we'll start with Liz, followed by Neelam, then Brian, then Jenny.
So this is not an issue that Liz Hartman will solve on her own. This is part of working collaboratively with the school board, and the school board's responsibility is writing policies. And the school district is only good as good as the policies that they write. And we have been reviewing policies, and now it's more of an annual review. It used to be more like every three or four years. Things keep changing. So the hiring of the superintendent who will oversee the principals who work with the teachers is the way that the board can do that from the top down. The rest of the work sometimes has to be from the bottom up, which is students working with students, having the courage and being encouraged to speak up and note when something is not going right and getting it bit into the pipeline with the adult system to make sure that we are always doing the checks and balances that need to be to ensure the experience is what every student experiences through the Lake Oswego School District.
Another strategic priority that I'm really excited about that's new for the school district is promoting health and resiliency to really support the social, mental, and physical health of students and employees. We need to, as a school district, be creating safe and inclusive spaces for each and every student, including our LGBT students. And so we need to lead with trauma-informed approaches and support services, counseling, and teaching practices. We also need to construct our facilities in a way that are inclusive of all genders. The gender-inclusive bathroom design at Lake Ridge Middle School is a wonderful example. The sexual education curriculum that we've adopted as a part of the Great Body Workshop also includes LGBT lessons, and I'll stop there.
Mrs. Schwartz, may I ask you to repeat the question, please?
Yes, the question is, how would you address issues regarding ongoing anti-LGBTQ bias in the schools?
So I think, as Liz indicated, as a board, our ability to do that is through oversight, hiring, and modeling. It's important that we put people in positions that respect those issues, that respect the dynamics that are evolving in our schools, and that we, as a board, model the acceptance and inclusivity that we want to see trickle down through the school system. I think it again goes back to, on the other prong, education. We have to normalize the acceptance that we want to see in our society through our children. We have to start foundationally with them, and that is by, as Neelam said earlier, the mirrors, sliding glass doors and windows, by including a more diverse curriculum that reflects a variety of participants in history and contributors to our society, so many things. But I think we have to model, and we have to put people in place who reflect and appreciate that.
Thank you. Let's see, the next question has to do with single-use plastic... Oh, excuse me, Mary, are you trying to get my attention?
Can you let Jenny answer that question?
I'm so sorry. I didn't mean to exclude you. Sorry. It's okay, I'm the last. We're eager to finish up. My answer would be that, yeah, normalizing it, showing it, you know, whether that be in our community, teachers, education. I think one way to do it is not make it alarming with different pronouns, you know, just right off the bat, if you have any different preferences, making that like an easy transition, especially sex ed and health classes, I think, including all aspects of relationship and life and growing up would be really important as well, and gender neutrality. Yeah, and I think just showing visibility and that it's okay and normal and not trying to make it some emphasized issue, I think, is also kind of important because if you feel different, you're gonna feel not included just by the nature of being different. I think students especially, I think, going up, even if being different is completely fine and normal, in your head, you think it's the end of the world. So making sure that doesn't happen as well, I think, is really important. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. All right.
Thank you, Esther, for facilitating the audience questions. I want to say a special thank you for our candidates for being here tonight and sharing your thoughts, your ideas. I want to thank our moderators. You did an excellent job, and we appreciate you so much. And to all of the workabees behind the scenes here from LOSN or Respond to Racism, thank you all so much for what you've given for this night. And we're doing it because we want to support our candidates, and we want the best for our schools. And so with that, I'll say thank you one more time. I want to remind you to vote. And good night. Sleep tight.